I'd like to kind of call to order the Town Box Committee of the Hall. I also would like to welcome Gary McDonald, which is in our gallery. We'll move on to the approval agenda. This time you need a motion. So move.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Mayor Henry. Any question? We'll move on with the presentation, which I'm going to pass over to Linda and introduce Mrs. Corey, Denise Corey.
Thank you. So Denise is online with us here tonight. Can you hear us okay Denise? There, she's given us a wave. She has a presentation here for us tonight. Denise Corey is the Director of the Cumberland Public Libraries. She has worked with the Cumberland Public Libraries for more than fifteen years. And ten of those years she has been the library director. And please Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, I just found, I Googled you today. Ms. Corey is a graduate of the Dow Health University with their Masters in Library and Information Science. I have worked closely with Denise for a number of years and she has worked with us when we had to move out of the location on Water Street to a temporary satellite library at the medical center until we found a home at the Paperweight Fitness, which was formerly known as the Oxford Journal Office, located on Riddow Street. Our councillor, Carla Black, knows Ms. Corey well, as so have many of the council from past presentations she has done with us. But councillor Black sits on the Cumberland Regional Library Board to represent Oxford. So I would like to take this time right now to welcome Denise Corey here tonight to our meeting. And I will now turn the mic over to her for her presentation. Do you need to sit? Not for you?
Pardon me?
Are you going to share screen of your presentation or?
I can share screen. To. Except can I do that? Share screen. And this. Sorry. Technology, it's my favorite. Okay, are you folks seeing my slides?
We are, thank you.
Excellent, okay. So yes, hi, I'm Denise Corey. I am the library director at the Cumberland Public Libraries. And I am very happy that you invited me to speak with you folks this evening. I am going to let you know that I am working from home right now. And I do have cats. And sometimes they like to interrupt presentations, so. That could be a thing that happens. So I know that I've spoken with you folks many times about the public libraries, but I'm just going to give you a little reminder of how we operate and what kind of services we offer. Because I realized that while the public libraries are all that I do. What you folks do involves so much more in the community, so I'm just going to give you a little reminder. So we are one of nine library regions in Nova Scotia. All of the library regions are independent, so we all operate with our own library board. And that's our governance. And we all have different salary scales and all those types of things. We do primarily get our funding from the province of Nova Scotia. It's about seventy-one percent. And we get about twenty-six percent of our funding from the municipalities, so that's you folks are one of our municipal partners. And then the rest of the money we fundraise by applying for grants or having fundraising activities or receiving donations. So here in Cumberland County, we have seven locations, of which Oxford is one. We also provide outreach services, so we have a borrow-by-mail service where we will mail things to any resident of Cumberland County for whatever reason. Sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's mobility issues. We have online services and we provide interlibrary loan. We also joined something called Same Page in April of two thousand and twenty-one. So we're working with all of the public libraries in Nova Scotia outside of Halifax to provide better access to materials for all of the citizens of Nova Scotia. And that has had a dramatic impact on the amount of usage that we've been seeing. And I'll show you our statistics in a minute. So what do we offer? Obviously books, but also eBooks, magazines, DVDs, radon meters, happy lights, some locations have horse snowshoes, which I thought we were going to need today, but no, all of the snow is gone. We also offer accessible products like books and Braille and audiobooks for people who have visual disabilities through Seela and Nels, and those are specifically for people with print disabilities. And we offer programs and services, so you know, we have fun summer reading club programs, we have craft programs. Authors come to visit, we offer technology help, just all kinds of things that people in the community might need. So last year, the whole of Cumberland County, we loaned out over a hundred and seventy-three thousand items. That's the best that we've done in about twenty years. Keep in mind that the population of Cumberland County is about thirty thousand people. So that's a lot of things that we are loaning out. Throughout the county, we had over eight thousand people attend programs. We've offered almost sixty thousand hours of Wi-Fi use in the past year and had more than fifty-eight thousand people come through our doors. And then specific to Oxford. Oxford had ten thousand four hundred and fifty-six items borrowed from that location last year. That's physical items that came through the doors at the Oxford Library. And three hundred and fifty people attended programs. And we had three thousand four hundred and sixteen library visits to Oxford. And according to the census in two thousand and twenty-one, the population of the town of Oxford is just over eleven hundred people. So that's like everybody in the town who visited three times last year. Okay, so I wanted to give you that background just to remind you of some of the things that we do. But I also want to talk to you today about our funding situation. So I know that these things are hard for you to see on the screen, but I do know that Linda put them in your package, which is fantastic, so you can go and take a look at them. And I realize I have a limited amount of time with you tonight, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time. So this has been our provincial funding since two thousand and ten. Sorry, my cat is moving around and shaking my desk. This is working from home. So you can see we had a number of years of frozen funding or practically no funding. Or in one year, they reduced our funding by point three percent. So trying to work within those numbers, we did it for years and years and years, and then in two thousand and twenty we received a substantial increase and it was fantastic and I was so happy and so excited to be able to offer services to the public that I knew that they needed and wanted. And then the the province gave us this funding formula that they suggested that we use. The municipalities would have received copies of these at the time back in two thousand and nineteen. And you can see here that this is their suggestions for salary scales and for how much we should be spending to refresh our technology each year and how much we should be spending on purchasing new books each year. So I'm trying to fulfill this amount that they're telling me that this is what we should be doing. And the money that they've provided doesn't fulfill this amount. So. We're we're trying to be able to afford to pay staff at a living wage. You know, something that is reasonable. We're trying to be able to be open hours to be able to provide things to people. We're trying to be able to provide up-to-date technology that that patrons can come in and use. And it's it's not working with the amount of funding we have. And of course, you know, the cost of everything went up in the last three years, literally everything. So this is our salary scales versus the town of Amherst salary scales. I'm assuming that you folks know where you line up with the town of Amherst. So what I want to point out is in the town of Amherst, if you look at level three, that person is their cashier customer service person who works at their desk in Town Hall. They make about twenty-four dollars an hour. If you look up into the section that is highlighted in pink and you see part-time branch assistant for less than fifteen hours a week. That's what the folks working at your Oxford Library are making. It is a five-step salary scale. We had a substantial increase to our salaries last year, nine percent. And that nine percent increase brought our bottom step to fifteen dollars an hour. Fifteen dollars an hour is now minimum wage in Nova Scotia. That is how much we had to increase the amount that we pay people to be able to even offer what is now minimum wage. And that's not living wage in Cumberland County, as we all know. The living wage in Cumberland County, I've seen it calculated from anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-six dollars an hour. And it's only going to get more expensive. So the people who are working for the public library are people who are working making next to nothing. So we recently cut the hours in the Oxford Library. It is now twenty hours a week instead of twenty-six. That is because one of the staff members there got another job. It's her third. She has three jobs. And we're working around her schedule. We were already planning to cut hours because we can't afford to keep open the amount of hours that we are. This year, we are anticipating a deficit of approximately eighty thousand dollars. Next year, if we didn't cut anything, our deficit would be well over a hundred thousand. Last year, we also ran a deficit and we can't, we just, it's not possible. We have run through the funding that we have set aside for these types of emergencies. And we just don't literally have enough to keep going. So the hours in Oxford will be remaining at twenty hours a week. The Ox, the hours in Pugwash are going to be reduced in February because I have a staff member leaving there and they, the reason they are leaving is because they can't afford to work for us. The hours in Parisborough and Spring Hill will be reduced starting in the new fiscal in April. The only reason the hours are not being reduced in Amherst is because Town Council there has decided to give us additional money. And they are also writing a letter to the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage to encourage them to provide some emergency funding. This is an ask that is coming from all of the library regions in Nova Scotia. We are the first library region to have to cut hours. But we will not be the last library region to have to cut hours. You're going to be seeing it happening across the province. So I know that times are not easy for municipalities either. I understand that. You know, the tax rate doesn't keep up with the amount that you have to pay to be able to provide the services that you provide to your citizens. And the library is only one aspect of what it is that you have to do. So what I'm asking for is funding if you can or advocacy on our behalf to the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage to let them know that your public libraries are important. They provide an important service to your citizens and to all of Nova Scotia. And that we need some assistance. And I'm happy that my power stayed on for that whole thing. I was really worried.
I have a question Denise.
Yes.
I know you said that they kind of dictate where your funding goes. Would it be helpful if that wasn't so strict?
It's actually not strict. That's their suggestion of how we spend our funding. So for example, you know, they they in that funding area, they said that we should have a certain number of FTEs. It took us several years to get to that and we won't have that soon. They also said that we should be paying our admin support and our finance person a certain amount. Well, we have one admin support that does finance. They don't make that much money and it's not even a full-time position now, so it's you know, like they they dictate to a certain extent that this is what we should be doing. But it's it's not written in stone. It's it's more of a suggestion.
So if you were to write a letter, it wouldn't help to say, you know, stop painting them in a corner. It's just really more money is what we need.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, certainly, I if if we wanted to, we could reduce a number of staffing and spend a lot more money on on library materials to loan out to people. It would be up to the library board to decide exactly how we spend our money because our library board, so look, look at Carla. Our library board is our oversees our financing and our governance.
Well, you mentioned eighty thousand dollars. Is that all of Cumberland County?
Yes.
Well, we can almost sure, we could certainly send a letter of supporting your plea for extra funding. We'll have to meet and discuss if we can do anything else to help from the town.
Yes, I understand completely. I do understand that there you have a lot of responsibilities and people in addition to needing the services that the library provides, they also need roads to drive on and water to drink, so there's a lot, there's a lot that a town has to deal with. I don't envy your jobs. It's not something I ever jump up to do.
When people do, when you do with raise money, do you raise money in Oxford and it stays in Oxford or you raise money in Cumberland County?
We raise money in Cumberland County. So for example, we had a book sale. We didn't have enough materials in December in our book sale to send it out to all of the branches. Sometimes we do. But the money raised from that book sale is going to go towards summer reading club for the whole of the Cumberland County libraries. So we, I I don't really want to isolate the libraries. I feel like they work really well together. You know, we're we're serving the citizens of the of the whole county.
Any other questions? I'd like to thank you for your report, the information.
And and I really do appreciate you you taking the time to listen to me. And if you have any questions that come up after, even if you don't have questions within council, but you have personal questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I'm happy to talk about the library all the time. As as Linda knows, she has heard me.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
All right, thanks folks. Have a lovely evening.
All right, I'd like to move on to the approval of the minutes, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Hearing no errors or missing, like the prayer of the minutes is read. Now I'd like to move on to Town Department reports. Crystal.
I'm only being as quick as I'm available tonight, so. I'm just reading. Five hundred, no, I assume that's five four four loader, not five hundred and forty-four loaders. Five four four loader back in service after recent bodywork was completed, cleaned up a lot of branches from moonstorms, replaced sewer pipes at Prince William Lift Station, sidewalk repairs around town, repaired stop sign on the corner of Waverley Street and Water Street. Loader and backhoe serviced by brand tractor. Power outage at Wells Generator started. Everything operates as it should. Installed new valve and water line on corner of Pugwash Road and Peel Street. And snowstorm cleanup. And that's it from there.
All right, thank you for that. We move on to the Fire Department report, that's some reporting.
I'm reading it again. The Fire Department had a very busy two thousand and twenty-three responding to a hundred and sixty-five calls. They're not here tonight because they're responding to another one. Twenty-five calls for the month of December. Five MDA, one in town, one in our district and three mutual aid. Eleven medical related calls, five in our district, five in town and one mutual aid. One structured fire in town, one unknown fire in town, assisted to our C and B. One chimney fire in town, five calls for power lines arcing, all in our district. One smoke sighting in our district. None of these called were in town, twelve calls in our coverage area and four mutual aid. I am pleased to say that our new natural gas fuel generator is now operational. The commissioning was completed on January second. We have a mutual aid practice planned for the downtown area this Thursday, January eleventh. We are using artificial smoke during this training. Let's say that one again for anybody. We have mutual aid practice planned for the downtown area this Thursday, so tomorrow. We are using artificial smoke during this training. Please use caution if you are in the downtown area. We might want to put that on Facebook. I think they probably will too, maybe we can share it. Respectfully submitted chief Bruce Rushland.
All right, thank you. Crystal, for that firm's report. I'd like to move on to the mental physical activity report.
Oh, just got a text in from Jimmy that is unable to get online. He had technical errors, so we do have his reports submitted inside the council package and it's available online as well. My apologies.
Five point four. Administration report presented by Linda Cole.
Thank you. So I'm just going to go over, we are administrative assistant and a reporter, available online as well. A couple of highlights, a quarterly update on our stage has been done. Mid-month reporting, I see the port maintenance. Various giving things ready for various committee and council and town meetings as well. But also to highlight, lots of work has been done on our approvals, organizing and analyzing and creating reports to be submitted. Met with the Minister of Justice representative for Oxford for the policing services review. His name is Curtis Katalotinsky. And he is filling in until a new person is appointed. So the great thing about this is that we can therefore now continue with our police services review committee meetings. We have one scheduled coming up here, I believe, in in January. I think I should get the next report. Okay. And also Ruth Ann, our manager of finance, has been working hard on the AROs with our auditors. And also she's been actively taking a course on asset management and updating our assets with the current resources that we have. That's our report.
All right, thank you Linda. I think we will move on to the financial reports. Presented by Ruth Ann.
There she is. She printed a copy for everybody. I did, sort of going to the screen, but the same thing as all the others. And so for the public, it is online. I have it online as well. Basically, it's a it's a report for three quarters of the year. So the year end will be March thirty-first, so the budget that you see in the first column, and there's two reports. There's one for our general operating and another for the water operating. General operating being the biggest one. It's eight pages long there. So you see what the budget figures were and how much has been posted so far is as of January first, and then there's a column of what's left to either receive or to spend for this year and the percentage of what's left to spend or receive. Some of the things we, some of the items there, we receive once a year, so it might be a hundred percent received or spent because it's a one-time bill. Other things are like a monthly bill, quarterly bills, so basically in the last column, you should be seeing somewhere around twenty-five to thirty percent to be in a good stead with that GL. When I go through this, the bottom line takes you takes you to the total expenses so that we have left to spend is twenty-nine percent. So we are on budget. So we should another thirty percent of the budget left to spend for the year to, I mean. You know, you never know what's going to happen in the winter and you just have to sometimes you have don't have to use a lot of salt and a lot of overtime snow removal and the rest, but so seems good to me. If anybody has any questions on any items on the eight pages.
Do you have any idea where we stood last year at this time as to what we had?
It was about the same. We stayed on budget last year. Yeah. So that's why I like doing it this time here. I will keep a watch on it quite close the next couple of months, just to make sure because there always are some bills that haven't been posted yet for December that is going to bug through this and but a lot of the big ones that we had are are in here. I made sure of that, so. And a lot of the ones that we only get once a year that I haven't received yet, I let on we received it because I know that that's that's already. Yeah. I can't see anything that really concerns me too much. There are a couple of things that we are like you noticed, Town Hall maintenance. We have a lot of money left there. It's because we're doing renovations that haven't been done yet, but they are in the process of doing that now and.
Another question for you. I'm looking at the residential tax. So one of nine hundred and ninety thousand basically is what we expected. We've only not collected thirty-five hundred.
That's not what we collected.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just the revenue. That's what was billed it.
Okay.
Yeah. There is on the last page, an allowance difference for those that don't collect it. And that depends on your year end, so I won't know that figure for sure until year end. But I think it's thirty thousand in there, but it could go one way or the other, so then you're, it's always an estimate, so. Last year, that was grand what it was.
And nice to see that D transfer tax doing well.
Oh, that's that's been a Oh, that's, that's been a, I, I predicted it lower last year too. I figured houses would stop selling, but they haven't in Oxford and it's been nice for us. It's been nice for us. Yeah, it's something we haven't had in prior years. Yeah, so uh, does anybody have any questions about anything?
Are there any further questions over there?
I, I do have another budget.
Yeah.
To go through, but I don't know, I'll be buying this one though this time. It's eight pages. I've been watching line by line, but there is something that's.
I think we have it.
Yeah. Uh, the next one is the water operating. It's much shorter. It convinces a lot of stuff in, in water operating, but it is a totally separate budget that we deal with. Uh, you know, it's revenues, we only get uh, fifty percent and that's because. This quarter hasn't gone through yet and March should be another quarter. So there's two quarters that we have in collective revenue. So with the general operating, we do have a little in the bank right now to pay the bills for the rest of the year. Water operating, yeah, we depend on getting the uh, the water bills so you don't have to worry every quarter, unlike the tax bills. So basically, uh, it's, it's doing okay as well. We had a lot of uh. Costs in water this year, uh, a lot more regulations and. Procedures that have to be done and we've had to reach out for help with a lot of these things through Dylan. Uh, consulting, uh, so, but we're still on board, so. Hoping the, the rest of the year continues on like this and uh, we'll be okay.
We brought them the same that we did last year at this time on that?
Pretty much, yes. Uh, we were a little bitter last year. Yeah, there, there are more expenses that come up this year, especially regulatory things that we had to do.
The water cat study.
Yeah, yeah, so now the other thing, I just wanted to tell you that um. Last year at this time, one of the big differences was we were sitting on receivables of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. This year, we're only sitting on receivables of a hundred and thirteen to five hundred thousand. So we are significantly lower this year. The tax sale last year really cleaned up a lot of old, old um. Uh, receivables. Uh, this year, we're a hundred and twenty-five thousand less. And this year, we have people four years only, and there's only one in that fourth year. And that person's on a payment plan. So really three years. Where last year this time, we had people only back at least nine years. So the tax sale really did bring in a lot of that old debt. And it got the books cleaned up to a place where you can deal with it in a lot better, better way. So that going forward, um, we'd like to proceed with the procedure that we did last year and keep it an annual thing. Uh, I did send out preliminary notices to those people who are in a tax sale position. And according to our policy, the tax sale accounts that have the current year taxes outstanding. And part where all of the prior years are in, considered to be in a tax sale position. So it's anybody who owes all of two thousand and twenty-three plus. So anybody who's into two thousand and twenty-two or twenty-one, uh, would, would also have received these preliminary notices. Now, somebody came in to pay it right off, others went on. We have five people down payment plans. Uh, right now, there's twenty properties in tax sale position. Uh, five are on, on payment plans. And the other fifteen will be sent out notices of intent in the near future. And uh, hopefully that will clean up a lot of those, but we're, we're not in such a bad condition as we worked for. I would like to continue the process though because I feel if people get too far behind, if they get. More than three years behind, it's, it's really hard for them to catch up. Where now, if they can at least even do so much a month, it's better than, than eleven ago, so.
So when will the tax sale be? When are you thinking?
Probably spring some month. It depends, maybe all these people come in.
Right.
There's not, like when I say fifteen, there's three of those that, the people that passed away. And it was left to nobody. So those have now gathered up enough like. And there's a few that owe seventy dollars, should have filed out. Like, you know, but you still, you don't want them on the books or whatever, so you need to get those. Need to send them off just to get things cleaned up too, so.
So you, you've got a policy set which we're going to follow.
Yeah, yeah, we did it last year and uh, we did have good results and, and. I feel that it's, it's fair for those people who do pay their taxes.
I have a question about assessments and caps. Uh, when a property is sold, do they lose the cap and then? Does it come back?
I think that's how it works is when you take over a property, you buy a property. Uh, if there was a cap on it prior, that's gone.
Okay.
So, and I think. I'm ready. You've got to have it for a couple of years before they recap it.
Okay.
And I think that's how it works. Uh, I tell you, I read all state points we even had. It's exciting.
That's gonna add to that. At the next meeting at the hole, I'm gonna try to arrange to have that as a presenter.
Okay.
Uh, we should be answering some of those questions like the caps and that and things like that.
Eighty percent of the, the numeral that came in this year is cap.
Yeah.
And the assessments went up across the province. Um, twenty percent. Now, the cap brings it up to ten percent. But across the province and we're just right on par with what it is across the province. Where our, the evaluations have gone up and then ten percent in this number.
Still at thirty percent.
Wow.
I wonder then if we could put that out to the public that if you, if they are coming for sure. Put it over the public and if they have questions, they can ask us ahead of time and we can ask the people. It's a good idea when they're here.
It's unfortunate that uh, they won't, that meeting will be before February eighth or?
Yeah, 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 after February.
Yeah, so the appeal though is.
But you have, have your feeling by February the eighth, so it would be, it would be better that if that meeting goes before that, so people.
You guys are good presentation on that. We tried to do it. Yeah, okay, I'll see if, I'll see if I can arrange that. Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that's it for our reports.
Alright, thank you Ruthann. I also like to thank all the town department heads for their respective reports. And Crystal. I would like to move on to number six, which is council committee and board reports presented by Linda Cloud for our reports.
Thank you. I'm gonna just go through all of them, uh, going back and forth.
Six one, six four.
Yes. So we'll start with the first one. Uh, six one is accessibility. So the accessibility committee, uh, all of these committees, uh, because we had our meeting just before the Christmas break. And they were just getting back. There hasn't been meetings uh, since then. But um, last time we spoke, there was a, a scheduled meeting for accessibility for December fourteenth, but we had to postpone that. Um, due to conflict. And so now the new meeting is February twenty-ninth. Uh, the committee currently, the committee and the staff are actively working on accessibility audits uh, for town properties. And um, in preparation for the budget preparations for council, uh, to meet the accessibility needs. So that being said, they are also looking for committee members. Anybody interested to reach out to me there on accessibility? We did hear of one new one that may be coming, so uh, so that'll be. You might be coming this month. Yes, that's right. Very good. Uh, the next report is on All Saints Community Healthcare Foundation. We are currently looking for a volunteer from the town of Oxford to represent Oxford at these meetings. The meetings are held bi-weekly and are around ninety minutes long.
Excuse me, is it bi-monthly or bi-weekly?
Oh, sorry, bi-monthly. Thank you. Bi-monthly, let's clarify that. Yeah, so every two months, uh, there's a meeting held at Spring Hill at the hospital in the wardroom. The town would cover the mileage, uh, for any volunteer that's attending those meetings. We just need a representation for our Oxford. So currently staff is doing this, but it would be better to have someone from the community of the volunteer to attend these, that meeting. So just to put that out there, if you're somehow maybe a retired healthcare worker that may be interested in these. Um, it just, it's nice to have someone to represent Oxford around this uh, foundation. So next up is the policing review committee. Um, we haven't met since June nineteenth, um, due to we wait for a response from the Minister of Justice Office regarding an updated uh, GDPRM. Um, and also their office had a staff changeover for representative Forrest, which I mentioned at the last report. Uh, the committee will be now meeting on January thirty-first at six PM to meet the new representative. And to talk about next steps with, you know, with the process. And to talk about the letter that was sent to us from Minister of Justice. So that's coming up here on January thirty-first. And then the Road Trails Act Committee, um, some actions going on that as well. The committee plans to meet here on February fifth to discuss next steps and to hear from Barry Burnett. He's the executive director of the ATV ANS. And he's familiar with the Road Trails Act and knows some of the communities that have adopted the Road Trails designation bylaw. This committee uh, is at the very early stages of considering this bylaw. Lots of discussions to be had, but the public will have an opportunity to give their input in regards to the bylaw in the future. More information on this to come. And that's what I have there.
Well, I thank you very much, Linda, for the committees and the board for their respective reports. Anybody have any questions at all? I would like to move on to, I discuss some correspondence presented by Linda Cloud.
Okay, and we have a note of it over tonight.
Well, before I act for adjournment, I have a little something to read to our uh, town residents. Before adjournment, I'd like to talk about the PVSC. I want to take this opportunity to let the public know that the property evaluation assessment has been mailed in to all residents of Nova Scotia. This is a precaution, uh, assessment, and to clarify that council does not set these assessments. The council's role is to set the tax rate. Please note that there is an opportunity to appeal your property assessment. If you feel that is successful. Please send your appeal to the information provided on your property assessment. That would be on.
Slip, the trade on the.
Get right on the slip.
Yep.
Know later than February eighth, twenty twenty-four. If you have any question about the project, please contact the meeting office. Adjournment, and if there is any further business to discuss. Hearing none, I'd like to declare this meeting closed.